Recording in progress.
Okay, we'll get started with our West Haven City Council meeting tonight. We appreciate we're getting a little bit of a late start tonight. My name's Rob Vanderwood, I'm the mayor of West Haven and call this meeting to order. Tonight, we're running a little bit later because we, some of our council members attended the Utah League of Cities in Town Fall Meeting in Salt Lake City, and so we wanted to accommodate that as well to make sure everybody was good to go with that moving forward. So, we'll move on with our, our agenda that we've got set up on here tonight. We'll start with our opening ceremonies. We'll ask a pledge allegiance from Councilmember Saunders And our prayer or moment of silence from Councilmember Schwab.
Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Which means to apply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind, and gracious heavenly Father, we come before you tonight as a council and staff To discuss topics of, of need to the city. We ask thee to guide our thoughts and decisions And make sure that we're thinking of all of West Haven and not just the present, but also in the future. And we ask for these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Saunders and Councilmember Schwab. We'll move on to our agenda. Right now, we have set up for our executive session, but we have people here now.
Yeah, I was wondering if maybe we might be able to move number four up so that we could...
If the council would be willing to do that, we can do that, if you want to move forward with that.
Yeah, I would concur with that actually, to move that up to before the executive session.
Okay. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move forward with that. So, we'll move on to item number four and we'll bypass item number three. We'll move into discussion and possible action on grants and, and it says the general plan. I guess, we have...
So, the council asked a number of weeks ago for us to have a map prepared That shows all of the city properties and, sorry, words escape me just a moment. And Ed has prepared that, I think actually, did Ryan prepare it, I guess? So, that is prepared and he also wanted to be able to talk about with looking at that map, what you might be interested in applying for grants. And my understanding with the general plan is you just wanted to possibly talk about transportation or some, or Something along those lines with, with that. So, we have our department heads here And Sherry being them to just have, you guys have a discussion. And if there's questions about certain things, we can, you know, get that information and, you know, do the research and get that information, bring it back. But it was our understanding, you just wanted to be able to just talk about what you wanted to, to possibly pursue with different things.
Okay. Alright. Council, do you have any questions from that explanation?
I have some questions on the map, if you don't mind. Are you or someone here able to give history on some of the parks from some of the older subdivisions? For example, Mayor, that little park in yours, was there ever a plan for anything more than it is now? Is that something that we want to seek out ramp grants for benches or bird watching stations? Again, we have a few parks like that within the city that are just grass. And then that's fine, but...
Did we have Sherry come up to the microphone too, just so that we can, well, which Sherry? I mean...
All of the above.
All, all of the Sherrys.
Sorry, sorry, we startled you.
What's Sherry?
Sherry might be the most helpful.
I think that's a, all four of you, let's go.
I mean, frankly, it might be a little helpful for all of you to kind of move forward because...
Yeah, that in the back.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, all of you need to move forward.
If you guys could move forward in front of the public that's here.
That's like in some church class when everybody sits in the back.
Okay, look, just sit on the front row, people, it's okay.
So, I think, I think to answer your question, yes, there are several of these little parks around the city. And I'm sure, you know, Brock's been around a long time and knows about these, but yes, there, some of them, we have Mild items that are on there and some of them, we have people that utilize it, just, it's green space for them. We had, I think that was one of the reasons that we got rid of doing some of the, the transitions that we had when we were accepting subdivisions. We ended up with a lot of small, I'll call them a pocket park or a neighborhood park. And so, there's absolutely, I'm sure, if we wanted to improve on those, that we could look at grants to, to do that. Yes, come on up.
Just with that, one of the things recently, well, maybe a few months ago, I was asked to try to put together like a one, three, five, 10-year plan. And so, we have a very, just a basic, most, that's pretty much complete. In, in reference to the ones right there by the mayor's neighborhood, there, there's not a lot of parking there and so we don't, It's one that we kind of just were given. Hard to program there just because there's so much, so it is kind of a leisure park. However, on Monday, they're pouring the footings for one of those small pocket pavilions. We did a pre-con there today. And so, they'll, they're going to pour the footings on Monday and then later in the week, they'll come in and start constructing the, the pavilion, Which we kind of have to do smaller. We start having people parking on the roads in front of homes. And so, some of those small ones are a challenge, like Fair Grove has a small parking lot. And so, we want to be careful how much we try to drive there, just so it doesn't become a problem for the neighborhood residents. But we're starting, we're going to try to do those small pocket pavilions. We'd like them to be in all the parks because it makes all of them fairly useful.
Absolutely.
Adding some things in, but, but definitely, you know, as late Mayor alluded, there's
Are there...
A lot for additional items in some of those, just because of the nature of the size and the functionality with parking. That one, for instance, there's just that little kind of that curve and what, eight or 10 cars maybe, right there?
Yeah. Are there others like that that are getting pavilions, or is that just the one?
Yeah, we, we purchased two. We had two that went into the budget and right now, one of them's going right there at, at, at that park. And then the other one is going over by the east bathroom at Privadel Park. And then, but we'd like to adopt, we had a plan to do one at Fair Grove, But when they started building the Utopia, that kind of took a spot and we wanted to kind of relook at the irrigation there before we put another structure Because that went almost where we wanted to put it. But that had made it kind of very unique to water that area, so we decided to hold off and we moved that one to Privadel Park where I think it'll be used pretty heavily.
I think this map is really neat to see all of the city properties on here at once. And not to jump on your toes at all, that was not the intent, but just to kind of understand for me, as an individual council member, All of the properties and ensuring that residents throughout the entire city are getting addressed equally, not just the, the big parks. Not the ones that have the most, you know, people squeaking, I guess is the right, I mean, not the right term either, but just want to make sure they're all addressed. So, this is neat to see. And I'm sure, you said you're, you've already generated that list of priorities?
Yeah, yeah, and I have a copy that I can send that to Amy and Emily if you'd like, so you can kind of see the basic plan. And essentially, what we did is we looked at those.
Buck in the mic.
You love it better.
Are you new here? I'm just kidding.
When I speak in Sacramento, they say...
Can you hear Brock?
Well, that voice. We want to try to make those usable, just to try to spread because recreation dominates some of our bigger parks. So, the more we can add into some of these smaller parks and make them user-friendly, Then we can kind of spread the wealth a little bit and also add amenities into some of these other parks where The only thing you could really do is throw a frisbee or, you know, simple things like that, which is, people like that. But, you know, the functionality of it, I don't know if there was master plans for any of those when they were, when they were first adopted, so.
Do you know if the city has any dedicated dog parks?
Yeah, we, yeah, we have one.
Okay.
We have one up at, up at...
Part of a apartment complex, right? Or, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's not our favorite, definitely not our Mo Crew's favorite. It's, it's pretty small. And I didn't know a lot about dog parks when they came in. I thought it would be a little bit bigger. But we were sure that that's kind of a, a, a normal size. Nowhere near the one in Roy that's on 500...
Fifty-six hundred and thirty-five hundred, I think, something back behind the Maverick.
Yeah. That's why partially there's a section in Privadel that could...
You need to talk into the mic.
There's a, sorry, there's...
Brock is new here.
Because Kim's not going to be able to hear you online.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's a section at Privadel that could be utilized as maybe a larger area to run a dog off leash if we chose to do so. But right now, we don't have really anything like, like, like what Roy has in that park. Ours is very, very small. And I think it's technically available to all residents, but it's kind of hard when you drive through the apartments. You don't, it doesn't scream city park, right? So, driving people to that is, you know, I don't know, there might be some people that utilize it that way, but I think most of them just kind of walk there from their residence.
So, North Ogden has that dog park on 2700 north east of Washington. And it's down in that giant hole, right? It's quite large. It's almost, I wonder if we have detention pond areas that could double as dog parks? For example, the one on 4000 that we're currently leasing for horses.
Yep.
A few parking stalls and some doggy bags and I think that would be a usable, usable piece of ground again.
Very fair. They have one down at Fort Bonamontura. I don't know if it's still there, but they, they developed it as such just north of those, Like Serge Simmons Field and there was a softball field, just north of that, they developed one that's fairly good size. And that one's more, a little bit more like Privadel where it was just more raw vegetation that you can just kind of go run your dogs in. But, yeah, there's, there's definitely properties that could be utilized for that. There's probably power line properties that maybe could be utilized for something like that as well. So...
Excellent.
Do you know how many properties West Haven has altogether? It's a test because you've had two strikes on the mic.
This is a test.
It would be an absolute guess.
Ninety-three.
I can't tell you how many times I've done that on a test anyway, so it's fine.
Hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine?
Hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine pieces of property.
The ones that get off my radar is like those slough properties and a couple of those, then you're like, holy cow.
But the reason I, the reason I bring that up is because we do have some really odd pieces in, in the city. I mean, I, I think about the same things as you do, you know, what can we use this property for, right? But we have some that are really strange too, like over here in front of the school, like the property line that goes over and cuts over in front of the school. We own property right in front of the, what's the deal with that? I mean, there's some things that we need to probably try and get figured out with, with all these properties on what we have a plan for. Does that make sense?
There's so many that, well, a lot of them that predate me, but I don't know what the intended use was. And, you know, if there was a while in the back where I, you know, you come in and you'd be like, oh, hey, you have another piece of property.
And why the school district doesn't own that?
Salt Point was another one that I was unaware that we were taking and, and so, landscape architect's doing a great job at getting that established for us. There's been a few issues. He tried to turn it over a couple of weeks, but we turned it down just because it wasn't ready. But, yeah, the intended use for those, some of those, I, I honestly don't know what the intended use is for those. So...
Okay. Well, I know we can talk about that a little more later.
I was, I want to do, I want to talk about that a little bit more because in the conversations that both the mayor and the council member, Councilmember Schwab has brought up regarding the parks, there's one in Stone Creek, is it Ranch?
Up off 18.
Across thirty-five hundred. What is that, an acre?
Yeah.
And it's next to an HOA park? So, what, I mean, what do you think about that? What?
I, my personal opinion, and I, and I talked about this a few years ago, when it comes to these, and I don't want to speak out of turn, you know, If it, if it's not at least, if it's not at least five, four, five, I think it like determined his last, last time was about four or five acres, It just turns into something that we just have to maintain. Staker Park, when we, when they first tried to bring that one online, I was concerned about it until I, we started playing with it with Garner and we realized we could run two football fields there. And if we expanded the parking lot, it becomes recreational use, which could take away from the country park and also from the sports park that get beat up so much. That becomes functionally useful to us.
Right.
These small ones, you know, they're, that is, that is a, that is a challenge.
How many of those do we have, would you say?
Oh, man. Well, that are developed, there's some that are developed and there's some like the mayor's talking about that are just absolutely undeveloped. And I'm not sure how we ended up with them, like we have half of a detention pond.
Y'all are mowing that. I know that you mow that.
Yeah. We have a lot of, yeah. Use, well, sorry, ask, ask me the question again. What was your question? I apologize.
Well, I just wonder what you think this city should do with that? Just continue mowing it in perpetuity? Is that the suggestion?
There's a lot of that property, honestly.
Because it's just sitting there.
Well, like the, the trail around, around your neighborhood. Personally, I wish like crazy, we could give it to the residents and let them extend their fences back. You know, it's a very difficult piece to pave. Those pavers are going to go through, they're going to melt fence. So, we're going to have some fixing to do after that. And I know there's an easement that runs through there. You know, the properties like that become, you know, property at Windsor, we dealt with, with that family up there, you know, taking that over. Is there a way that we can still maintain our easement? And, and they can take that and make that part of their yard, just knowing that there may be a time or two that we have to go in. There's other ways that we can go in and mow, but right now, we only mow that just because we have to mow that. But it's not a high priority just because it's such a small section, but it's important to the residents to make sure that it's mowed. And so, we have to make sure we attend to that.
Well, and also because we have a city ordinance and, I mean, surely they'll contact Dan and...
Correct. You know, and, but we don't have the time and the equipment to maintain, like, like Windsor pre, you know, pre now, You know, that's a property we can't go out and mow every week. It's just, it's, it's a field, you know? And how much resources does the council want us to spend on a property that's of that nature? Versus all the other properties that need to be manicured a little different because they're improved. And so, yeah, there's, there's a lot of properties in the city, you know, there's a lot of properties along sloughs. There's one that's been fenced in, there's supposed to be a gate over in Salt, is that part of Salt Point or is that over in Ellie, uh, Bree? There's one over there, they're supposed to, but right now, it's completely landlocked with fencing and everything. We can't even go in there, so...
Got the rocks in there.
Yeah, we're talking about trying to get, there's, there's one on the east side that we can get into, but there's another one along the slough. You know, we're looking, honestly, we're looking at trying to get some goats in there.
It's a kind of a detention pond type thing, but you can't get back to that.
They came through and put the vinyl fence and there's some broken on the far north, and so, we're going to have to try to find out if we can go in through private. Or do we shore that up and try to put some goats in there to try to maintain that down where it's completely fenced? Stop it right now, we can't even access it to take care of it.
Can we pull this map up? Is that possible?
Wouldn't be great.
I'm looking on my phone, but my, my screen's a little small. Molding and Sons, do we do anything with that park?
Yeah. Well, it's mostly maintenance-based. We actually worked with Two Rivers. I was trying to get them to adopt Molding and Sons around the pavilions. Did a really big project with them about three years ago. We went through and tore down a lot of that viney tree in there, Cleaned out that bottom where it's kind of open now. Lot of deadfall. We have to go through and try to take out a lot of deadfall. They haven't been back to do another project, but that one was fantastic. A lot of it, we've had a couple of trees that have gone down, so we do routine maintenance when that happens. And then we go through and garbages and things, but it's not a park that we currently reserve. I've had a couple of weddings ironically that have gone up there. The parking lot on the north side on Marriott Sladeville has made that a little bit more functional. So, working with them on that was, was a good thing. But, but, but it's more or less just kind of there and available, so we go and we check on it, make sure that everything is still functional, Make sure there's no major problems in there. But, yeah, we don't get a lot of requests to reserve that one. That one's just one that's just there for people to enjoy when they have the ability.
I'm going to admit, I didn't even know that was our property till just now.
Yeah.
It's an area I'll have to go visit.
Yeah, we may have to, I mean, this is just a recommendation to the council, but we may want to try and, we have the inventory list that was put together. You know, so we have an inventory list of all of our properties, but we, we may need to sit down and just to have a, a good review of all the properties.
Even a field trip?
That's what I was just going to say.
Who doesn't love a field trip?
We could, we could very easily facilitate something like that. We could get a couple of trucks caravanning and go show you what, what some of these look like and...
I think that wouldn't be a bad idea because it just helps to see it and see the issues or, or the, or the advantages.
If you guys think you're going to get a lunch out of that, just forget about it. It's going to be a morning.
So, no sack lunch. So, no sack lunch.
You know what?
Best we can offer is Maverick on the way.
Do we have to pull it out of the beautification budget?
Yes. We'll figure it out. No, I think it, it might be a good idea to do that. I just think that too, there's some pretty good sized properties. Is the city, you know, what are we, we just need to know, I think, what are we doing with these properties? What's the plan? So, you know, you mentioned the, the three, five, or 10, I think you said, your plan. That might be really helpful to, for the council so that we can try to make some decisions, maybe down the road, a little bit on direction. We've got the general plan coming up, you know, what are we going to do with these properties? Is, is one of them going to be a dog park? I mean, do we have a great place for that that the citizens really like? Dog parks are really popular. They're not fun to maintain.
No.
Nobody likes doing the dog parks, but they're really great to main, or not to maintain, but to have in the city.
The idea of the, the one up at Privadel is very similar. I don't know if you've ever been up to Olympic Park in Park City. I went up there and took a small tour as my family was up there for a reunion. And they have a nature dog park up there that is so popular and they like it just because it's not on ornamental turf grass. It is open where it's not the end of the world if somebody doesn't do due diligence, right? And so, they like those kind. And we have a few properties that are similar to that, not that sizable. Privadel is, but, but not that sizable in some of these others. But they are properties. There's the property that was purchased that's just southeast of Windsor. You know, there are other properties out there that could be utilized for things like that if you chose to go that route.
We have an ordinance right now that you can't go on Privadel Park unless you have a dog. Because everybody down there has a dog, it seems like, but...
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of great places, you know, we have over by the tunnel, remember those, a property, you know? What are we doing with that piece? It's just sitting there and it gets used for an ATV park. So, but there's a lot of things I think we could do with some of the properties and plan.
Agreed.
Plan for that.
Brock, this is Kim. Can I just ask a question about the trails? So, we have the park over there by the Two Rivers. Which part of the trails, of these trails would be, actually be in West Haven? I know that's a little bit different question, but...
No, it's, so you're talking between West Haven and Marriott Sladeville?
Right. So, you know, you go down there and then that park is ours, but what is considered the trail part of West Haven?
When you go to 1900 west, just east of Privadel Park and it goes on to the north side, It is ours all the way until it crosses back over at I-15 and goes under to Kenworth Trucking. That's all Marriott Sladeville, which we do need to, we, you know, I can work with Amy on this. We've, we've talked about this many times, or maybe Ed. We need to get with Marriott Sladeville for an, in a local agreement. Everybody thinks that's ours, even Marriott Sladeville residents call me because, you know, there's a few issues with them being able to address certain things. So, we do our very best to...
Tell me that one more time. So, we go from 1900 west clear down to where?
Yeah, you'll, when you hit 1900 west going east on the trail, it's going to go up over the bridge.
Right.
I don't know if you can see me or not. You go over the bridge and then you go underneath. When you go over that bridge, you go into Marriott Sladeville and everything on the north side until you cross the bridge coming back into West Ha, or at I-15 essentially, that's when you come back into West Haven.
Okay, great. Thank you. There, there was some questions that someone had on that and I wasn't sure, so thanks.
Yeah.
Is that, so on the, you're saying on the east side of the freeway?
Once, once you get the east side of the freeway, you're back on the south side right there by Kenworth. And then you're headed on the south side up to the, the river where they, where they converge together.
At that bridge, that's kind of a walking bridge.
On the, are you talking about on the west side of I-15? Yeah, you cross over. We implemented that bridge.
Okay.
Yep.
So, it sounds like we do need to maybe go look at some of the bigger properties and we can pick out probably some of these that you feel would be good.
Yeah.
That we could run around and do. I don't know, is there any other questions you guys have for Brock? We probably ought to get to grants too.
I'm taking all their time.
Way to go.
Any other questions?
No, not right now. It's interesting though, this came up, this kind of thing is exactly what one of the workshops today was about.
So, question then, just for follow-up for Emily and I to do. So, my understanding is we're going to get the list from Brock as to what his, what is it, the five?
Three, five, and 10.
Three, five, 10 priorities.
I can send that to you in the morning.
Yeah. And then, do you want him to maybe make a list of some of these properties that might be good for, for some other use and, and...
Would the council think that, like for general plan use, is that the properties that you want to look at? Something that could be developed or used for, or that we, we may want to disperse? And properties that we want to trade or, or trade around or move some things around?
I wouldn't mind seeing some of the problem there is too, to just see if, you know, we'll try to think about and understand what we might want to do with those as well.
And, and if there are, if there are things that, that, you know, that you've heard that, that people would like to see, That might be helpful trying to figure out how these properties could be useful. Some of them to me might look like I have no idea what we can do with this, but maybe there is a use that someone's brought up. And so, you know, that might be helpful to know if there's anything that you've ever been hit up on, it might help us understand how it could be useful. Because we've heard a lot of, you know, what do we do with that piece? And sometimes, your guess is as good as mine on some of those, we just more or less inherited it from a development essentially. And so...
We own, we own property on 4000 that is pretty, probably potential commercial property. But, you know, what are we going to do with it and how, you know? So, we need to probably take a look at it. I don't know how many, how many legally we have to be careful too, with how many we haul, having a meeting and doing all that fun stuff.
You can't have a quorum. So, if, what we could do is schedule with Brock, yeah, do...
Well, can we, but can we go look at it as long as we're not debating, deliberating, discussing it, just like looking at it?
Meeting and go do that?
We can have a meeting to do a field trip. We just have to be able to notice it up. We have to notice it up correctly. But like I said, we could also split it up that, and Brock take, you know, Take two groups out at two different times and then have another meeting, you know, council meeting and talk about...
I think that would take three, wouldn't it?
We just put us in two different trucks and look at them.
You put three council members in one group, you got a quorum.
That's, that is true.
I'm not good with math. I'm a comms person, but I'm pretty sure three people is a quorum.
We, we could break that up however you need to, if you wanted to do that.
Yeah.
We, we could probably do a meeting.
We just have to notice it up correctly.
I think that would be the best thing because Brock doesn't have time to haul everybody around three times.
It would be nice to do it all in one. I mean, we'll make it happen if we need to, but it would be nice.
We have about 10 Kubotas we could all ride.
Oh, that would be a good time. I think we should.
Any of you are welcome to come. We can take you on. I've done that before where we've taken people on trail ride to understand exactly where the trail goes. Happy to do that if you want to see exactly what that trail does.
Well, it is fun.
So, I know I've been with Councilmember Saunders up at Privadel, kind of showing a few things in the past, so...
What we would need is for Brock to provide the list because that's going to be where we would have to, you know, post it, That we're basically having a field trip. These are the properties where we're going to be visiting. I mean, we have to have some pretty significant detail as to where we're going to...
Could I, could I add to that? Because there are 109 properties and I don't want to guess. So, if there are specific properties that you definitely want to see, then maybe you could send those our way so we can make sure to hit those. Because I don't think we're going to hit all 109.
I think it would be better if you send your, your potentials over.
Okay.
A lot of these are just right of ways, right of way strips, so...
And obviously, that's not something you necessarily want to see, right?
No, not unless they're sufficient in size and we can look through here and see if it's, you know, a little tiny piece, we don't need to...
But there are, there are some that you, you do have ideas for, right? That, so I mean, that would be definitely part of it.
That would be in the plan, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and, and maybe, so if he provides that list and then you guys look at it and if there's additional ones, we could, that you guys, yeah, you could add to it.
Does everybody have a copy of the inventory, the inventory list?
I know I do, but where I've got it, I don't know.
Do you want us to send that back out?
Yeah, if we could get that to you.
Let's send it out. So, it needs, it probably needs to be caught up again in the near future when we get things going. But, yeah, we've had some surplus and some items that come off of it. Okay. Anything else on property? It sounds like we kind of got a plan to maybe take a peek and go really look at the city, see what we got for properties.
Time frame for that?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Okay.
What are you guys thinking? You want to try and, we, we want to probably do it before it gets too cold, so we're looking at...
Is there, can I, can I ask, is there... Is there, can I, can I ask, is there a possibility that maybe we could wait until after the arts festival?
That might be the, the best thing. Plus we just need to make sure that we compile the list from Brock and for, and the list, anything that you guys have. So we just have it, cause we have to be very particular about that list about where you're going to be. When's the, what day is the art festival again?
Twenty-third. Just a few events and a few time sensitive things. We're trying to get wrapped up. If we could by chance, maybe just give it that time. And that'll also give us a little time because this is something I'm gonna network with a couple other people as far as those properties. Make sure that I don't forget something because there's a lot of them.
Besides, Emily is gonna be gone until, you know, then anyway and, you know, you don't wanna miss that, right? Field trips are awesome.
We were talking about a field trip today.
So maybe we look at the, the last, we look at maybe the last week of, of September?
Possibility.
I, I think I'm gonna be gone then, but yeah.
If, if it needs to be a different time, we'll, we'll make sure it happens. So.
Do you wanna look at the first week of October?
If that works for everybody else.
I mean, it'd be nice time for the leaves would be changing and, you know.
Oh, nice.
Just if we could do it before it snows.
Nina just gave me.
That'd be good. But, you know, I, I might be gone that last week.
Meant to keep that inside.
But yeah, what about the first week of October?
If, if there's a day that works for everybody, no matter when it is, we'll make it work.
I think the first week of October is good. Oh, wait.
We'll find a time.
I am traveling that week, I think.
Well, let's get our dates together and we can turn them in and see what we can come up with for a date. It's always hard to get everybody together, but.
Well, you're supposed to be all together on the fourth, so of October, just. So I mean, even if we had some type of the, you know, work session out in the, you know, do something like that before the, um, council meeting. What does that look, Carrie? You're not saying anything at all.
She doesn't like parks.
Never say anything.
Carrie's pretty anti-park.
Anti-park and trail.
I think in your review, Brock, if you come across these little strips of right of way that we may have come up with a plan, but now they're landlocked. If maybe you suggest, hey, let's, let's try to find a way to get rid of these off of our books. Versus ones that have some clay to mold with across the street, but we just don't know. I think those are worth funding on to, but. Uh, is it twenty-two hundred south and twenty-two hundred west? Is that Sea Crest? There's that little tiny triangle in the back?
Yep.
I don't think the trail is ever gonna come through there.
No, the little, the L Street right there off twenty-five fifty. We mow it every year. I've had to remove lots of trees out of there. I don't know if it's ever going to function as it was supposed to, as it intended to there.
If it's not gonna be usable, mines will not have the expense.
At some point as a city, we have to look at what we can do to take that off the plate.
And a lot, a lot of times we, we, we build the trail and we get some grant money or something to build it, but that turns into a long-term. You know, those, they have to be sealed. They have to be overlaid. They have to be shouldered. And so a lot of times, you know, when we invest in that, we have a maintenance item now. And so some of those, like in your neighborhood, I don't know if that is really that important where we have a nice sidewalk that wraps around. I don't know if that's important. If it is, then, you know, by all means, let's do it. But those are some of those properties where, you know, I try to honestly, I try to find a volunteer group to come in and take care of that as much as possible because it just turns into.
I think the mayor walks that trail daily.
I can't get through it.
Oh, is it that bad?
It used to be that bad. It's not that bad anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just tough. It's, and then you're sharing it with the canal and you've got different things that go on with that where they let their weeds grow too. So it's hard to keep the weeds out, but.
Yeah, we can do that. Absolutely.
Sounds like we got a pretty good plan for that and to review it. I think that was very helpful. Thank you. Should we move on to grants?
Yeah.
Yep.
Everybody okay with that? All right. Let's move on to grants. Sherry, do you wanna? Anybody have any questions or maybe Sherry wants to give us an update on some things that you got going with grants?
So I don't know if you've came up with any ideas. You know, when I was here, I think it's been two months ago. We kinda gave some ideas of some things you might wanna be considering. And I don't know if anyone is. Um, I did hear you say when you were talking about picnic bench or, um, park benches, that, those are always good, easy grants. Because those are two thousand dollar ones and sometimes you can write that and get a couple of, but again, you have to have parking and somewhere to put them, so.
Well, we're finding all those parks right now. I think Brock can throw some X's on the map for those benches coming up.
Yeah. So I don't know. Do you, did you come up with ideas with grants you were thinking of? So again, you can have one major grant, three in parks and wrecks and three in arts and museums.
I mean, do we want to, I mean, Brock's supposed to be sending over the list of, you know, what the priorities are. Um, do you wanna see that first before you try to?
Well. Sorry. I need to speak in the mic too. What are the deadlines that we're up against on those, Sherry?
So not until January. Our first deadline is in January. So we have a few months. It's just really good, you know, I'd like us to really, by October.
To be able to ride it and.
If we knew by October, so we just, because the hard thing is, is you always have to have pricing. You know, that's kind of what we ran in a little bit before when we were talking about the community center. Then all of a sudden it was felt a little bit like, oh, hurry. Well, it's going to be this much. Well, what can we cut off? Well, then that didn't, didn't really work. So it's just better if we have a little more time that we can think in, in, you know, I think I maybe brought this up last time, but they really do suggest with grants is what is you, what do you need? And then let's write a grant that fits that need rather than, you know, last year it was kind of like, oh, we, let's hurry and get these grants written. Well, what can we write them for? Well, more importantly than that is what are some things the city is really in need of? Then let's write the grants for those needs. So.
So why don't we get the lists from Brock? I think that that would be a good starting place for you guys to start thinking about what it is that you want Sherry to ask, start asking for.
You know, I think it might be good to have kind of a list, Sherry, of, of what kind of the possibilities are too. So that maybe we can look at it side by side and maybe prioritize it. So, I mean, I know that there's a lot of different things we can do. So is there a way that you might have a, a list or we can brainstorm a list or do it that way?
So I think before when I came, I think there actually was a list, wasn't there Emily? I think for our work, uh, with it before we had a list. That we gave you, uh-huh. But I can certainly keep coming up with more ideas as well, you know.
I was, okay. So when we talked about it before, I thought we mentioned a couple more, but I will go back to my notes. I might be wrong.
Yeah, and we could have. And so it's two hundred thousand plus is the major grant. Anything less than two thousand can either be a parks and wrecks and arts and museums. And then the two thousand are the easy grants. So, um, I know last time we talked, you know, about if we still want to try to do a community center, but if we do, we need to actually have it be like a cultural center. So that can be like an art center or something that could have, something that could be, even if it ends up being for the seniors to do some indoor pickleball. It has to have either a, some kind of a recreation, you know, um, component to it or an art component to it. And then I know we talked about possibly some, you know, new restrooms or some additional restrooms at the country park. I was just there for some, um, really cute flag football before I came. So when I was looking around the park, I was thinking, oh yes, what are some things that, you know, we see, we kinda talked about maybe new playground. That was, um, one thing that we had talked about. We talked about maybe some of those wind spinner art type things we could do. There's the evening of art. The, um, concert that you did, the arena or the rodeo, fall rodeo would have been, you know, there's lots of things that you can always will fit in with a grant.
So I think the big question for me is what, what do we wanna do about the community center? Is this something that we want to go forward with? Is this something we're thinking we don't? And so I'm not sure how the council feels about that two hundred thousand dollar grant. So I would be interested to know how the rest of the council feels about, about the, that grant for that community center or art center or whatever we wanna call it.
And it can be up to four hundred thousand, five hundred, it just has to be over two hundred thousand. And every year we do see major grants that are given that are in the three, four hundred thousand dollar range. And so if you did, it would.
Sherry, can you remind me what we were going for on the community center as far as amount before?
Yeah, what was it this year?
Fifty.
How much was it?
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
And they, and there's grants all the time that come across for that, five hundred and more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was the one that we were, we were thinking. And I think that's the one that if we were gonna go for it, we need to know. Or if it's something we wanna wait on. So that, that would be my question. Is that something we wanna go for? Or do we wanna step back and look for maybe some smaller grants? So that's kind of where I'm wondering, or, you know, what, what we, where we wanna go from here.
My, my thought on that, Kim, um, just speaking for myself is I like the idea of having some, for the, for the community center, having it be something that would serve multiple uses. Um, I know I've mentioned before indoor pickleball courts. Because I think the reason is, I think that's gonna be probably one of the most popular sports in the entire country. I mean, there's, there's people investing in professional leagues in it right now, like professional basketball players are, are investing in it. I think there's, like, it's growing so fast and there's such a need. But I also, I think it's important to have something that can be used for the arts too. And I think there's probably a way to design that so that it could be kind of a multi-use. Center that we, you know, we, we can have the arts there when we need to. We can have, um, senior events if, if we need to. At certain times, it's, you know, an indoor, indoor pickleball courts that are gonna be very popular. I mean, extremely popular.
I think you bring up a very valid point with the indoor, uh, pickleball, um, courts. Because when we visited, um, I don't know, what was it? A year, two years ago that we visited, uh, Farmington. So Farmington City has a, um, a recreational center with, um, indoor pickleball courts where they turn the basketball courts into in, indoor pickleball courts during the day and they were completely full. If you go to the Pickler in, um, Kaysville, I think that's a indoor court, that's completely full. The one out in West Haven, I think it's called the Shed, always full. Uh, indoor pickleball courts are definitely needed.
I just heard about one in Brigham City that hosted like a professional tournament.
It's a big event now up there and this isn't the first year they've done it. I believe that they've been doing it three or four years at least.
Like people came in from all over to Brigham City.
Oh yeah, they will because how many indoor pickleball courts are there across the state?
Yeah.
So, and it gets obviously very hot in the summer and very cold in the winter. And so having an indoor courts or courts, um, would be beneficial to the residents of the city. So I could see that being a big deal. I, I love that you bring that up.
I don't know of any indoor pickleball courts in Weber County. Does anybody?
There's one not far from my house. It's called the Shed and it's actually in a pole barn.
That's a good time. That was this shit.
Yeah, um, I've been there once. I didn't go inside. I was actually buying something off someone from KSL and they were meeting me there because they were going to play pickleball. And the parking lot was full. Like there was nowhere for me to park and it was a big parking lot. So it was clear to me that they, um, that that's heavily utilized. So.
I think too, that's one thing, we did, we did spend a lot of money for a gym. And we, we got a, an expensive gym that's coming up that'll be built at the end of this year. So, or next year, this year. Um, so I don't know. I think that I, I, I kinda feel like, and I, I agree with you to a big degree. However, I do think, you know, a community center would be nice to keep it as a community center and, and keep the sports side of it slightly separated. Um, I think that I, I'm, I've told Sherry this before. I'm not a, as big a fan as trying to just get a grant and hoping for the best. I think the city could go ahead and move forward with affording to buy that, uh, community center and move forward with it and get the bids from some people. I think we just overbid it a lot. And, um, tried to, you know, put too much or whatever together, but I think that's something the city does need very badly. I would, I would like to see some of these bigger grants go towards, uh, things like Sherry said, things that we need. A community center is definitely a need, but I think we're trying to bend it into something maybe that wouldn't be as good. Uh, but that's just my thoughts on it. I think the, um, uh, anything that we're doing like with Windsor Park. You know, we've been waiting for years to get that park done. I have no ties to it whatsoever. However, I just feel bad for the people. I'd like to see that thing done and completed and not be a dust pile again all through the fall and next year. Uh, but we're working on that, trying to get some of those things up and running. We got a plan that will be coming out. But maybe invest in that and, and put our bigger dollars into investments into the city that everyone will probably trying to use in different areas of the parks. Uh, but the community center, I, I mean, it's a good time, I think. But it's up to the council on direction on what we wanna go. But you did send out a good list, um, of what those things were and what we should be thinking about for those, um, items for the ramp grants. So, um, we should probably re-review that again and make sure if there's things on here, especially if we get the list from, I mean, a dog park could be a great item for us to apply for. There's not a lot of investment except for fencing and poop bags. I mean, what else you got?
You know, it's interesting because sometimes you come up with something that someone else doesn't have. Like I think I mentioned last time, South Ogden is putting in that big skate park. And they received a major grant. They received a big chunk of money because there's not anything around. And so sometimes you'll look at something and think, okay, what would be something really useful in the city that there really isn't anything out here? You know, we were talking about, we have a real issue going on by where I live of kids riding their motorcycles on the road, which they're actually dirt bikes. They're not street legal, but they're really scary. But then they're bent on this neighbor's property that they're allowing him, but now the neighbor says legality wise, you can't, well, now the kids are in the street. So sometimes I think, well then why aren't we looking? Maybe there's other things. You know, maybe there's something that would be really useful that's a recreation. Sometimes we just kinda, I feel like need to look outside of the box a little bit and say, okay, well, what would really be something and, you know, I don't know. Like again, look for your needs and then think, well, what do we have as a need? And then what can we write a grant to fit that rather than just trying to come up with writing a grant and then try to make it fit something, so.
We have talked about that park, um, on twenty-five fifty, end of the power lines, that area where the, uh, the Longhorns were before. As being some kind of a, you know.
BMX.
BMX bike park.
Like Clinton City had.
It's pretty good sized. Uh, that would probably make a pretty good, but again, you got dust and dirt. All the fun things that people like to complain about, but, but those are some things that we could be thinking about. And I agree, anything that we could use out there would be helpful.
Back to the community center, if there's a way to design it so that there is a part that's a little more designated for what you're thinking of. And then kind of have, you know.
I like the arts part of it because you could definitely do some, some neat thing there with it, but still keep it a community center for events and things like that that we have and hold, uh, within the city. We try and, you know, meet our senior lunch bunch in here and it's pretty crowded at times.
Right.
And it would be nice to expand that out. I think more people would come if they had a little more room too, so.
Well, West Haven could always do plays like some of the other places too. I know the arts council would be thrilled to have a bigger place to be able to do some other things. And again, if the community center, if we were to left the stage and if you could have afforded, you know, the pricing just was too much. It probably would have fit in and that maybe would have been a, a reason why it would have, but you, but again, you know, you don't know. But it has to have something that looks like it's going to, if you're going to do that and, you know, that'll fit an art component or like I say, or a rec program. It has to fit something.
I know it's probably more, you know, it's probably more of a cost, but if you did part of it, more recreational, part of it more arts. Uh, to me, I just see like, you might spend a little bit more now, but where you're, you, you combine the two things that you kind of, I don't know, you just service more people, I think while you're doing it. You might as well do something that's really, really nice and, and something that residents are really, really going to use on a large scale.
But wasn't that the problem last time? We put too many designations to it, so they couldn't approve it.
But I think I've heard arts and rec, can you combine those two?
You know, you really could because Huntsville did that and they actually received the grant. But you can, it will not pay for office space. So, and that was part of the problem too, is we had rec office space in there, which was fine. I mean, that was a valid thing to have, but that did not qualify for the ramp grant. Then once the stage was taken out, then it really didn't qualify for the arts grant portion of. Then once the stage was taken out, then it really didn't qualify for the arts grant portion of it. And then there really wasn't anything in there at all that had any kind of recreation. And then when it was like senior, well, at one time they did. Pay for seniors, but now they won't anymore. Like the Hope Center was one of them and we questioned that. But now they don't anymore. They said, you know, legally it either has to fit something that'll be with arts and museums or. With parks and recs or a combination of the two. And I think, you know, anytime you can use it for multiple, and once it's built. Doesn't mean that you still can't rent it out for weddings or have your senior things. They're not going to come back and say, well, you can't have a senior lunch in there. It's just, we cannot write the grant saying this is for our seniors, even though I, you know.
So a stage and pickleball courts. We get it.
Yeah, if you said it was rec and it was pickleball courts and even was going to be for our arts. You know, so you're gonna have, like you said, this part's going to have a stage that could be this nice room to have art council type events in the city. And then this part is going to be indoor pickleball. Yeah, there, there would be nothing in there. I mean, if there's an office, no. Because Huntsville had some office space, so they wouldn't let them count that, but the city's supposed to come up with fifty percent of it anyway. Doesn't necessarily have to be all cash because you know, you have the land which counts. And if there's labor or anything else that goes into that. Um, but yeah, then you already have nice restrooms that could be used for both. The kitchen certainly, even though they don't pay for food, but if the kitchen was part of a, you know, you're going to do a musical theater, like a. Um, dinner theater, so you need to have a kitchen. It can't be a kitchen because you're going to rent it out for weddings because then that. That doesn't count, but you know, there's a lot of things you can do with it. It just has to fit in with their. Right along with what their criteria is.
Do they have a criteria list that they provide or is there a?
You know, if you go on to even the Weber County Ramp page, then they have like their sheet that says, this is arts and museums. And it lists what it can be. And then parks and recreation, it lists what it can be. With that though. So I had never, ever written one before for the rodeo and it, it, that passed in flying colors. I mean, the same with the drone show. That I, I didn't know because I'd never written one for that, but, um, the Ogden Pioneer Day, they also wrote one in for the drone show. And that passed. One thing they talked about was, was, um, parades. They said, no, they talked about that. Does that count or not? But. So even though there's like that direct list, things certainly, because nowhere did it say a rodeo, but that still fit in with the. You know, arts and, and, um, museum because really you could say that is an art, riding a horse, which it is.
Especially when the mayor does it.
But it, but they do have that. Um, if you go to Weber County Ramp and then it goes through and lists, you know, all of that, but then again. Creativity works in with that too, because you know, there, I, I, this was my first year being on the advisory board. And I saw a lot of interesting grants that I would not have thought of with downtown things they were doing that. Fit, you know, that.
Alright, is there any other questions?
I'm in favor of using the large amount for an art center, a rec center, whatever we wanna call it.
I would be too. I would like to maybe explore that a little bit further and see what we can do.
You know, that, um, building down in Harper that, um, is owned by the LDS Church that is their white gym. Well, I grew up knowing it as the cultural hall. You know, my dad was actually the stake president at the time when they built it and it was the cultural hall. Well, the reason why it was the cultural hall, because it has a stage and we did, um, road shows and a lot of different things, but it has that full-sized gym. So, so it meant both and, you know, cause I dried down some notes and thought, you know, maybe you would actually need to call it your cultural hall or. Maybe not necessarily that, but that is as much a gym, that's the only really. I mean, it was the last standing gym they've actually built like that in the church, but it's, it's a gym. But then it also had that nice stage, so it, it was so many other things. And so, you know, I, I, I mean.
It was well, well-used.
Well-used, yes, and, and it still is. And they do in, indoor pickleball in there all the time and they do basketball. But then they also are, have veterans program in there where they're up there on the stage. They took down the curtains, which. Anyway, some things they've, that have changed in there that are not like they originally were. But no, you can do things with it and still have it be a multifunction building that would still fit in with the criteria. Without it having to have just one, only one purpose.
Thank you for helping us with that. Anything else on this? Questions? Let's get the list from Brock and let's review that and let's get some ideas over to. Uh, Amy and Emily to review and then we can get them over to you.
And if you want more ideas, I'm happy to. I, I'd like to write around and see.
I think that's good. If you, if you, from what you've seen, from writing a lot of grants, if you have ideas, I think it's just helpful. For us to get the wheels turning and have more ideas, even if it's not something that we decided to do. I think that'd be great.
That's probably a good idea.
Maybe she can see, you know, hey, I know that.
Oh, I saw this over here and this, this would work.
That okay, Sherry?
Yes, and if you go into that website, they list, they don't have this year's on there, but they go back a few years of all the. Grants that have been awarded. That always gives you some ideas too, because then you can go on and look and see, oh, you know, um. They were awarded this for this or like, you know, maybe some will go on now and say, hey, they just sort of got this fishing dock. You know, West Haven, someone else will say, man, maybe a fishing pond would be a good, so that's a really good resource too, is to go on and just look. Because it lists them all on there and that, you know, gives ideas, so.
Yeah, it's pretty nice to see that because they do have every section of what the grants are.
They do.
And then they have the easy grants, the two thousand dollar ones too, and you think, oh, they got a grant for that. It's amazing, but yeah, that's pretty nice to look at too. I like those.
Well, I don't wanna kick this can down the road for too long though, because the more time you have to ride it, we're not rushed till the end. She brought some ideas. Okay, we'll think about, now we have these ideas. Okay, we're gonna think about it.
Well, we gotta come up with what we're gonna do.
I know, but she brought stuff to us already to think about that, to maybe decide on some things tonight.
Okay, do you have anything else?
I'm just saying, all's we've talked about is the cultural center idea, so. You mentioned the wind art and bathrooms.
Yeah, well, in the evening of art, we'll see how the drone go show, in the drone show is, you know, that, I don't know. But that was a really a fun thing and the concerts, always a fun thing. Um, sometimes it's. E- even though those are things you're always writing for, sometimes it's nice to come up with other ideas because I know there was one. And I know because it was something I had started and I've written grants for it and when they said and everyone was in there like, oh no, not this again. You know, sometimes they want something new too, like they don't want it to be every single year. And I'm not saying we can't write it for this. But sometimes they don't wanna hear every single year, oh, West Haven rodeo, the very next year, oh, West Haven rodeo. You know, sometimes they would like us to come up with something new. You know, every single year Ogden Pioneer Days is on there and that's great. Sometimes though, I think maybe we could come up with something else. And indoor pickleball is new. They groaned a little when it was pickleball, like outdoor, because they said, oh my goodness, you know, all we've been hearing for years are. Pickleball courts, pickleball, that can anybody come up with something new? And I think that's.
There's nothing new. That's it. That's the thing.
Yeah, but I think that's maybe why the South Ogden, you know, when it was like a, a skate park was like, oh wow, somebody's coming up with something new that. Maybe would be something different than only playing, you know, pickleball. And there's also the outdoor recreation grant too. Which we can apply for, which, you know, we did and it, we didn't end up getting it. It was for that outside, um, fitness court. But there's other things too that you can always look in that area too, so I think, but no, um, I agree, Carrie. It'd be nice to have something, because, because for sure, if you're going to try to do a. Well, it'll be more than a million dollars because it was last time, but if we're going to ask for six hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We need to get going on it so we can get the prices and get it, I mean, now I know prices, well, I, I think they're coming down maybe a little bit. Maybe, but not, there's still a lot, but it would be good to get going on that, so, so you have time to say, what exactly do we want in this? Um, and if not, if you wanna do it on a park, that's always a, you know, they like that too. And there's usually not as many parks. Grants that are written as arts and museums, but the arts and museums are usually smaller.
Why don't we plan on, uh, getting everything in, uh, after, because we'll go on our tour. October, we can have some more discussion about it and get everything in by November first.
One thing is, if we did, if we did wanna move forward on pursuing the grant for this, wouldn't we, wouldn't. Let's say we, we all had somewhat agreement on the pickleball slash art center idea. Wouldn't we need to take that, get, get the plan revised so that you have that to submit?
Yeah, so it would have to be revised from what it was last time. Because it, before it was, you know, the big open room, but the stage had been taken out. It had the kitchen and then it had some offices. Which some type of a foyer is fine and you can do an office, they're just not going to pay for that space.
Just the square footage of that.
Yeah, but before there were things, you know, like having a storage, um, for rec, I mean, all the things, you know, I think that kind of brings. But then all of that was just too expensive when they finally had the numbers in that they said, we can't afford to do this. So, and then there was also concern because there were a lot of windows and then they were saying, yeah, but if you're gonna do a movie in there or some kind of art thing. How do you do that with all these windows? You know, then it just ended up.
But, but this is all feedback that's probably really good to take if we decided we wanted to do something and have. Have it kind of redrawn up so that. So that we can give ourselves a better chance.
When's the major grant due?
In January. I think it's like January thirteenth or something. I thought I had it in my notes, but I can't see it now. Was it the fifteenth? Yeah. Next year's, well, that's before though. Next year's leap year, I think. But then, then the other grants, um, so that's the major grant. All of the grants are due in January, except for the easy grants and they're due in March. Yeah, but if we have even, you know, some ideas, just so we can even, but yeah, I would, for me anyway. I think November's the very latest because then you have November, then you have Thanksgiving and Christmas and then sometimes meetings end up getting. Delayed or postponed because, you know, people are, and then we're to January and we really want everything done. Because then in addition to that, you need to have letters of support. And so once we know, then it's a matter of going around. You know, as, asking people and you really need to have different entities that will really use it. I, you know, I learned a lot about that this year too, because I, that felt, felt to me like that was the very last thing and people, oh, we have to have letters of support. So then people are going around begging people to write a letter. Some of them did not even pertain even a. To what the grants and I thought, what, what is like here for us? It really wouldn't, no reason to go to Far West Mayor and say, please write a letter of support for West Haven. We're going to come. Cause they, they, because they probably weren't going, you know, but that's what it felt like. People were just instantly now all of a sudden, who can we get? We have to have letters and they talked about that too. You know, if this doesn't even apply, this doesn't really score many points. Because it's not helping the community. Who, who else is this going to help? And it really didn't even fit.
I also think the bathrooms at the park are a big one. We need more bathrooms over there at the country park.
We had that, we had that on the list to get done.
Yeah, that was on the list to get new restrooms and we've talked about that. You know, we get enough and we're not bringing in porta-potties. And everybody knows there's a lineup for the, for the restrooms, you know, there with the, when you have West Haven days and the. Car show and it would be nice, but you know, Brock would know more on that way. They would need to be situated so it would fit with sewer and all of that. I'm not familiar with that, but they make them so nice and CXT's already done bathrooms. Did Brock leave?
Brock did leave. There's a small fire, um, going on over at, um, Prevedale Park and, um, Wildland Fire called him. And so he's go, he went over to go check on it.
Anyway, but the restrooms are nice now and they've had, um, Prevedale Park has one. They're just those structures they bring in. They look really nice. They're graffiti proof. They have locks, but those are nice, you know, you can get them. So they have like five on each side. I mean, they're, you know, it would be nice to have another set. I even thought that tonight when I said I was there with Little League football and by the time you're over there, you think, man, it'd be nice to have, you know, restrooms a little closer, so.
Yeah, that definitely needs to be done. Some of the parks is upgrades. I mean, we're starting to get some age on some of that stuff, but the, the restroom's for sure.
But if you're feeling like that's already in the budget, so let's find a grant somewhere else.
We, we put it in the, in the budget for this next, this last round. We can check on that to make sure. But I know that was, it was.
It was a priority when we were going through those.
Carrie, this is, this is Kim. I just wanted to say, did you put the advertisements in the Weber connections? Cause that was really awesome. I saw that before I left for San Diego.
So they did, they called and asked about that. So I thought that looked really good. And I don't know, Kim, or you're not home, so you haven't seen. The card. Those are really nice too.
Oh, I haven't. I just, I just saw the magazine before I left and, and they looked really professional and really nice. I thought that was a great idea.
Yeah, and I think this will really help. I thought these turned out really nice. You know, I hope that will really be a plus to get more people to come.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll definitely have to get some plans going on this and get this completed. Um, alright, so the question is now, do you wanna move into an executive session or do you wanna finish out something else on here?
Anybody have any questions with, um, Sherry and, and Ed regarding, um, any issues with the general plan with transportation? You'd mentioned it. So we didn't know, that's why we, we had them both here. I mean, we're asking Ed into the executive session, but, um. Wanted to know if there's anything else that, any questions you had with, you know, general plan stuff, looking at this map?
I don't have anything. Did you guys have anything that you wanna ask about?
I don't think so.
I think that's it.
I think. Anything, Sherry, that you feel like?
Well, there was a couple things. I was just gonna ask Sherry to stand up and talk about, uh, working on the general plan and getting some deadlines, I guess.
Sorry, could you say that again?
Uh, getting some deadlines from your, uh.
So, I owe the council a bit of an apology. I fully accept responsibility for a little bit behind the game. I think you guys have now, I've been significantly distracted by my health issues this summer and so I haven't been as. On the ball with stuff as I'd like to be, um, but hopefully I've turned a corner with that. You know, I did, I did have surgery three weeks ago. Recovery has been a little rough. But like, one of my friends told me, and I know this isn't what you asked, but one of my friends told me. That her doctor said to her, you've been drugged, stabbed and had a vital organ removed. It's gonna take a little bit. Um, and some days I've definitely felt that, but. Hopefully tomorrow, um, I had asked for it before I, I had asked, ho, I had hoped to have it at the beginning of last week. Hopefully tomorrow I'll have a mailer, um, that's gonna go out. I'll have the draft of it. Um, and I can send that to you guys just so you can look at what's gonna go out. I am also gonna set a meeting with the consultant next week and set some hard deadlines. I, uh, was reviewing the contract this week. Um, just to see, just to look at a couple things. Um, and I, when I was reviewing it, I noticed there were some things that. That I just need to sit down and get some hard deadlines on because I thought there had been a couple hard deadlines in the contract and there wasn't. So I need to sit down with the consultant next week, cause I know that in, on some things, um. We're behind where I had hoped we'd be. Um, and like I said, I accept, I accept responsibility for not staying on top of it as much as I should have. But once I have those, uh, set with them, I think it'll be easier sort of to gauge. Like what I need to be doing a little bit, just so that I can meet those deadlines as well. Um, like I said, I thought those deadlines had been in place by the contract and when I went to look at it, they're. They're not, so I'm gonna sit down with them next week and get, um, three or four hard deadlines in place. Um, so that we can manage the expectations a little bit better.
Okay, well, thank you for that update and we're glad you're back and feeling better. Okay. Well, thank you for that update and we're glad you're back and feeling better.
Yeah, mostly.
All right. Uh, anything else for Sherry?
No, glad, glad you're doing a little better.
What?
I said, I'm glad you're doing a little bit better.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's been weird, you know, when, like right now I'm incredibly hot and feel like I'm about to fall over. But, um, but it's just because, you know, I don't know if you guys know what your thyroid does, but partly it regulates your body temperature and when your body doesn't make its own hormones and is trying to get used to fake ones and random things happen like that, but.
It's a challenge, isn't it?
What?
It's a challenge.
It is. It is, but for the most part, it's been, for the most part, it's recovery's been okay. So, yeah.
Well, good deal. Thank you very much, Sherry. Appreciate it. Um, all right. We'll go ahead and, uh, let's move into the executive session and then we can come back and move on to the personnel policy.
You're excited about that. I can tell.
I'm pretty excited. So, um, right now we'll move into item number three for executive session for the council. We'll enter into this closed meeting for the purpose of a strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange or lease of real property to be held in accordance with the provisions of Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five. And for this purpose, I would, I need to entertain a motion to move from the public meeting to a closed session.
So moved.
I can.
Have a, have a motion down a second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we'll move into our closed session now. Thank you. Okay, well, we've returned back from our executive session. Uh, at that time, the council did enter into a closed meeting for the purpose of a strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange or lease of real property to be held in accordance with the provisions of Utah Code fifty-two dash four dash two oh five. And I would now need a motion to move into, from our, uh, closed session to our public session.
Summit.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to our last item. We'll second the last item on here. On item five, our discussion on our personnel policy. We'll turn that over to our interim city managers, Amy and Emily.
So we are, sorry. We are in chapter eleven is where we need to start.
Gosh, that's not a good place to be. Chapter eleven?
Well, we should be on chapter sixteen is what I would.
Oh, literally.
I'm joking.
And it's eight forty-two.
For the record, chapter eleven is a good thing for us.
It's better than chapter three.
Chapter seven, chapter eleven.
All right, with chapter eleven, if, I think the first one, do you want us to just flip down through Emily? Cause I think that it's on page one oh five, I think it's the first, oh, go back up. Is there an issue with this one mayor or just errant highlighting?
Let's see. No, I don't, I don't think, trying to remember what this one was for, four months ago. No, I don't think so. Can't see anything right now. Sure, I had a great thought about it a while ago.
Do you want to just keep going, Emily? Till we find the next highlighted?
Just looking for the highlights.
Okay, there's all of chapter eleven. Anybody have any, um, issues before we go on to general safety?
No, but with chapter eleven, you can't really change a whole lot anyway, right? Because it was all state law or federal law.
The majority of it is, because you have workers comp in there.
Exactly.
Return to work program, F M L A, yeah. Um, so let's get to chapter twelve, um, twelve point three on page one nineteen. The supervisor shall assume the responsibility of thoroughly instructing their personnel. Oh, we just need to add in about. Okay, that's an easy fix. Onward.
I shouted it about, apparently.
I love your caps. They're just.
I know, depending on what mood I was in again.
Well, if you're reading the personnel policy, it's not a good mood. All right. What page is that one, Emily? D. Oh, add S's. Okay. Wait, hold on. Why am I not seeing it? Oh, there it is. It's one twenty-two.
Add one S.
Yeah, okay, onward.
And delete.
We can do that. Okay, onward. Okay, anybody, wait, hold. Anybody have any other issues with, um, chapter twelve? All right, then on to disciplinary action. Um, oh, may proceed with, yep.
Yep.
Okay, onward. So anybody have any other issues with chapter thirteen? Okay, chapter fourteen. Grievance procedures. Right, are we into fifteen now? Okay, anybody have a problem with any grievance procedures? Okay, termination.
I'm starting to feel really good.
What was that?
It's starting to feel really good. Might have to get an ice cream cone after this.
Okay. Any other questions about fifteen before we go to sixteen? All right, let's go to sixteen. And we're done. All right, so I will make the changes that, um, you guys have suggested and I would like to say I'll have it back on the agenda on the twentieth, but frankly, I just don't know if I can make that kind of promise right now. Um, but I will try to have it ready for the first, um, meeting of October.
One thing we probably, I don't know that we ever came, I don't mean to put a wrench in anything, but we never did come to a conclusion, I don't think, on our timeframes for, uh, the lunch hours.
Now with the, whether or not you're just going to keep it eight to six or whether or not you're going to have them clock in and clock out regarding the.
I think it was by department was going to decide.
Yeah, but, but it's in our policy now, not waiting until this is done, but we probably need to just make sure that we have that address so that we don't continue into the next year with the same, same concerns because we, we have, we have to, uh, I mean, it is, if we're doing ten hour shifts, we should be doing ten hours of work on there and not.
I thought that language was corrected. I believe it was ten hours plus a thirty minutes lunch.
You, that's what, um, the discussion was, I believe with the, um, and then having the departments decide basically when.
What time their work day started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how are we, how are we completing that? Is that, is that going to be part, when the, when the policy's introduced and we approve it, that, that's?
That we're going to then have to have a conversation with, um, basically the employees as to how we're going to move forward with that. Which excites me to no end that I'm going to have to deal with that.
Well, we're trying to clarify and clean up some, you know, uh, the employee handbook is one. And the other part is just trying to get everything else in alignment with our, with our group, with, uh, making sure that, and we've got our team working on that too, but we want to make sure we're treating everyone fairly.
We may want to, um, figure out how to have a, a meeting with like all of the employees to talk through that. You know, whether or not it's you mayor or one of the council, um, we have, you know, two council members, not three. Um, but have that, you know, and just have a, a meeting of all the, the, uh, employees and, um, have that discussion and then meet, um, with the department heads as to how they're going to, um, work through that.
How, how far out, how, how far out do we anticipate? We got some of the members here of that committee on our, uh, philosophy.
Well, the next meeting we have is the end of September and that's, um, where we will hopefully have some standardization of job titles and job descriptions. I mean, that's our biggest, um, obstacle right now before we can set up a, um, any type of a ladder schedule is that we don't have. And, um, I was actually talking to Steve Brooks today and, um, about this and about what they've been doing and he was telling me that his H R, um, person has been really good about that, but again, from what he was saying, it's the same path that we're on right now. We have to standardize those job descriptions and those job titles before we can even, um, get to the point where we can compare, you know, do some sort of market study as to what everybody else is making to, to even be able to formulate a ladder.
I'm just wondering if it would be a good idea to try and introduce all this together? You know what I'm saying? To try and.
I think they're synonymous in a way, absolutely.
Instead of trying to just have one meeting and say, hey, you know, we, we need you to work more hours and then we'll get back with you on some other stuff where we just do it all at once.
Yeah, I agree with that actually. I think it's good to put it all out there at once.
So that would probably be maybe into October?
I think so. I mean, there's just no way, I think it's going to take us, you know, another hour and a half or so to be able to work through, you know, just that information with the, you know, the job descriptions and the job titles, frankly.
I think we're a few meetings out.
I was going to say, yeah, a couple more maybe, maybe.
I mean, depends on how efficient we get. I mean, but it's, we've been about an hour and a half, you know, trying to just work out where we need to, to go, but I think we have a good direction now. And so it, it probably will be into October before we are in a spot where we can start kind of taking those job, um, descriptions and titles and being able to then build ourselves, you know, some type of a ladder and what that's going to look like for compensation. So, I mean, I don't necessarily have a problem with waiting until, you know, later in October to have it done, just because, you know, I, I have nothing to do and I'm wondering, you know, just having to go through the, the handbook and, and get the, it just takes time to fix a hundred and, well, I don't want to say a hundred and some odd pages because it's not fixing every single page, but it just takes some time and that's the only concern I would have.
I also said something today that I'm now going to coin. I would like the new city manager to put a thumbprint on this before we finalize it. I think it would be important for them to.
Handbook?
The handbook, the compensation philosophy. I think we're hiring a professional that's supposed to be over this. We've done really good by ourselves. I think it would be really good to have them review and provide commentary on that before we finalize it and they see it through.
Yeah, I, I think it just depends. We, we haven't been fully downloaded as a group to, you know, to the, where we stand with that, but we do need to get that, this taken care of. I think that's a great idea to, to make sure that they can do that. I think it's just all how time, timely this all comes together. We've got a lot of, a lot of irons in the fire right now for sure.
The compensation part, I mean, us putting together the job descriptions and the job titles, I think that that's a good, um, exercise for us to get done because the new city manager can then come in and be able to have something that's standardized and help us build. Yeah, versus now, we're just kind of, we're, we're having to build a foundation and that's, you know, I, I think if we can get that done, it's sort of like us getting this, the policy manual where it's at, having them review it. If they, you know, we've done the majority of the work and, and it's a lot easier for somebody to come in and work off that than having to start from scratch because frankly, with the job titles and the job descriptions, we are having to start from scratch a little bit with some of this. Because I think that it's because you're going from small city to big city. I mean, you're, you're much bigger than, you know, where you used to be and, but the job titles are more reflective of where you were when you started.
So just, I mean, council member Schwab brought up a good point and, um, Amy's brought up a good point as well, but I mean, should we, I, I agree, we were already building, building this as we go along and, and we're putting something together, but we also may want to have them put a stamp on it. If, if they, if they receive that and go, oh, well, I would change this, this and this, then we would probably have to, you know, go through and make those changes. But I don't know, it might be, it just depends, I think, on timing. How does the rest of the council feel about it? Do you understand what I'm asking or?
I think something that's large, being the first of a year point, it's not a bad thing either. I mean, if we went into January one with, here's the new policy that we're going to see out. I mean, we could release it earlier than that so everybody can view it, but its effective date is January one.
Based upon the, um, interviews that we had today, I mean, you're looking at, and, and some timing, you're probably looking at November first for a start date.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with waiting, letting them review it, kind of, if they see something that, you know, they might have some ideas. I, I like that.
But at least they have a starting point if we have it, you know, put together.
I mean, I think it would be good, but.
It's, it doesn't mean we necessarily have to change anything, but see, you know, let them get their feet under them and, and see, and review it. And if they have suggestions, then we can consider that and kind of, I like the idea.
That was kind of the point too, is that, um, on our first city manager, when they came in, you know, there was ninety days to kind of get, get your feet under you and get going, right? That was kind of the, the goal. Where we're at now, if we finish this up in, say, October, we're going to be pushing any dates to try and get, you know, somebody to review it and make sure it's okay. So that's why I'm torn on either what, either way. Either we try and approve something, get it ran through, then they can review it when they get the time to, to go through it or we wait.
Yeah, I mean, I see both sides of that, so.
Any thoughts?
I think it's the same either way. Just like us opening an ordinance after the fact, if we need to make a change, you can open up either one of those and make a change. So we can get it passed through and get it done behind us and they have suggestions, we can look at it first quarter or second quarter of the next year and make the changes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'm fine.
All right, well, that sounds good. I'm glad we got that discussed and figured out, so. Uh, yeah, I'm excited to get the policy done though with the, with personnel policy. That'll be nice. And thanks for everybody's hard work on that. Appreciate that. All right. I kind of wanted to hold off until nine o'clock so we could end at an even hour, but, uh, is there anything else?
I, I do have.
Sounds like, yeah.
Now we're going to go over.
Nine oh one. We're going to have to go to ten.
So, um, we did do interviews today and my suggestion would be, um, there's two, um, candidates that you see about, um, you guys all interviewing them on, um, the twentieth. And I'm suggesting the twentieth because one of the candidates will be out of town next week. And so the twentieth is that the Wednesday?
Um, well, that's just something that we, you know, you need to.
Maybe as a work session? Is that what you're thinking?
You could do that. I.
Nine P M's a good time. Usually people are not doing much.
Um, I will just say that these interviews lasted about an hour each. One of them went over.
Yeah.
But that's not one of the two.
Yeah, what about something like that?
Go from four to six. I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
And then, um, Um, so would that be a closed session or open? Seems like we did close last time.
We can do a closed session for you guys to interview them. Um, of course, you know, when you finally pick somebody, you have to vote on it in an open session. Um, but yeah, we can do a closed session.
But discussing, so if we wanted to discuss them, we'd want to do that in a closed session as well?
I would suggest that.
Yeah, um, so I wonder, the only reason I'm asking is because those interviews literally went an hour each. I mean, we were here five hours today.
Same chair.
On the interviews. And. So if we end, if we ended up e- ending at six and then had to go straight into the council meeting. We might need an executive session later to discuss, do you think?
Oh, probably.
Yeah.
I mean, either you have, you either have, you know, you do your work session and and your council meeting and then just do one. You know, executive session. Um, but yeah, you're gonna be at least two hours, one for each.
Yeah, just for the interviews.
Discussing, you know. What you want to do.
Well, and if we end up. Getting done early and we discuss during the first executive session, can we not do the second executive session? So we just plan for two. Worst case. You think?
We could do that. Emily will be gone. She will be in Scotland.
Emily's fine with all the executive sessions we do that night. Do them all, she doesn't care.
Whatever, you know, make it extra long one.
We're handing out all kinds of executive sessions while Emily's gone. Yeah.
What time will it be in Scotland?
It's like eight hours, isn't it?
If we go later, if we go late enough, it'll be morning for you.
So, I mean, we could start it at four.
Yeah, we'll probably need to try. Can everybody accommodate that?
So are we doing the interviews at four or and and then?
And then a second executive session during the, during the council meeting.
Okay, I like that.
Okay, so we will, we will make some phone calls. If you have any questions.
If you can send us the questions that you've already asked.
Well, you've seen them, actually.
You got them?
You got them.
I know, but I didn't know whether you asked.
We did ask them all.
We asked them all and we did ask the couple that the mayor had sent out.
And there were kind of two sets of.
It was a lot.
Questions.
No, no, there was, so the questions, Emily sent out the questions that were asked the last time in twenty twenty. We did not ask those. We asked the ones that I sent to you on Friday. What was that?
They were on the same email that Emily sent out.
Well, no, the ones from twenty, did you send out both sets?
Yeah.
On the same email?
Yes. Yeah, you did.
I didn't think so, but.
You did. Yeah, but the other one was the newer questions that you had.
That was what I sent out Friday.
Amy said that.
Look, we don't necessarily remember what we've sent and what we haven't, okay?
Got two candidates, that's where we're at. Okay, anything else?
So.
It's been a really long day, okay? And Nina and Ryan know exactly why I say.
Been wearing this monkey suit all day.
I've been here all day. I've been here since nine.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service to the community that you signed up to serve.
You know, considering what we heard today, you definitely need to. I'm not gonna say anything more than that.
We'll just leave it at that. We'll just leave it at that.
Would you like a motion there, Mayor?
I'm, I think, are we done? Everything that we talked about, everything that we could possibly talk about? Let's move to item number six, adjournment. I'm ready for a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourning this meeting at this point, so be careful driving home.